Yes, Mr. Fernandez.
Chief Commissioner, can I let all parties know what's to take place today? I'll shortly tender two additional exhibits. Assistant Commissioner Anthony Crandell will give evidence in relation to the use of body-worn video. I will ask to take his evidence to a point, if you consider appropriate, for parties to be allowed to ask him questions, but then for Assistant Commissioner Crandell to return on Thursday to deal with one discreet aspect of evidence. After Assistant Commissioner Crandell, we have Assistant Commissioner Peter Cotter, who's going to give evidence about matters relating to custody management. With Assistant Commissioner Cotter is Sergeant Stuart Edgell, E D G E double L. He's the lead educator in the Custody Crime Prevention Training Unit, and he will give evidence after Assistant Commissioner Cotter about specific aspects of training. I expect that evidence will take a good part of the day. I start, Chief Commissioner, by tendering the following exhibits. I tender a case called, for the purpose of these proceedings, GHI. This is a judgment of, it's a transcript of Judge John Stone, the president of the Children's Court, on the 7th of August 2019. It contains rulings as well as submissions, so it's a transcript of a discreet part of the proceedings on that date. The barcodes are eight, five, three, three, four, eight, six, through to eight, five, three, three, four, nine, one.
Yes, the transcript of proceedings on the 7th of August 2019, before His Honour Judge John Stone, the president of the Children's Court, will be admitted and marked, Exhibit MTS 93.
I tender a statement of Assistant Commissioner Peter Cotter, C O double T E R, dated the 30th of March 2023. The barcodes for this statement are eight, six, two, zero, three, seven, eight, to eight, six, two, zero, three, eight, eight. The date of the statement is the 31st of March.
Yes, the statement of Assistant Commissioner Peter Cotter, dated 31 March 2023, will be marked Exhibit MTS 94.
I call Assistant Commissioner Anthony Crandell.
Yes, yes, thank you, if you could come forward, Assistant Commissioner.
Do you sign with me and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence that you should give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you so please say, I do. I do.
Thank you, have a seat, if you would, Assistant Commissioner. I think you were going to say something, Mr. Coffey.
Sorry, Chief Commissioner, I can indicate that this Assistant Commissioner doesn't require a declaration.
Yes, thank you. All right, yes, thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Can you please state your name?
My name is Anthony Paul Crandell, spelt C R A N D E double L. I'm an Assistant Commissioner of Police, attached to Technology Command in the New South Wales Police Force.
You are the, as you've just described, responsible for IT infrastructure and assets, development of technology for policing operations, is that correct?
That's true and correct.
Use of body-worn video is something that ultimately you are responsible for?
Yes, I'm the corporate sponsor for body-worn video.
Previously, you have been a commander in a number of different areas of New South Wales Police, is that correct?
Yes, that's true.
You are the corporate spokesman for sexuality, gender diversity, and intersex?
I was, I am no longer.
You were the project lead or commander responsible for the introduction of body-worn video, is that correct?
So, so body-worn video was first introduced in a trial phase, Phase One, from about 2014, and then I took over from Phase Two in about 2017.
Operation Mantis is an investigation into an incident that took place in Northern New South Wales in September of last year. Are you aware, in general terms, of what this investigation is about?
Very general terms, yes.
Are you aware that, at a time when a police officer apprehended a young person, that police officer was in plain clothes?
Yes.
Are you aware that there was no body-worn video worn by that police officer or any other police officer on this night?
Yes, I believe so.
Involved in that particular operation? And are you aware that there is a dispute about what happened? The young person says he was picked up and thrown to the ground and then punched by the apprehending police officer, and the apprehending police officer denies that.
I understand.
Could I just indicate, in fairness, the characterisation that no police officer was wearing footage on the night is slightly misleading, in that I accept that during the course of the interaction with the young person, there was no body-worn, but there is at a later point in time, after another of police and fire rescue, just in that needs to be put.
Yes, that's certainly the case. After the event?
Most certainly.
Uniformed police were there, but that tends to illustrate part of the problem, I think, that the critical phase is not the subject of any electronic evidence, and that's the aspect, I think, to which we'll be moving.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Shortly, yes, Mr. Fernandez.
I did indicate that the police, as part of this particular operation, were not wearing body-worn footage, body-worn video. Are you aware that one police officer, the senior police officer on this night, as part of this particular plain clothes operation, did have body-worn video with him, but in fact left it in the police car and never used it? Is that something you're aware of?
Yes, it is.
Evidence was given by police officers during private examinations, and I can summarise one particular aspect as being, there seems to be different understandings between police officers, even within the same command, as to when body-worn video is to be worn or not. That's particularly as it relates to being in plain clothes. Would you accept that as a broad summary of the evidence?
Yes, I would.
I'm going to start by asking you questions about body-worn video and what training police are actually given about its use. Can you describe the training?
So, every user of body-worn video must attend a two-hour face-to-face training lecture. That's guided by a number of principles, and it deals with policy, the standard operating procedures, the equipment, uploading procedures, tagging procedures, and then how to prepare body-worn video for evidence. Three categories of body-worn video needs to be tagged, that being evidence, complaint or a potential complaint, or if it relates to a workplace health and safety issue. So all that is covered in that, in that training. There is body-worn video supplied to the New South Wales Police Academy, and it is used in training those police as well. There is also a micro-learn package that deals with using body-worn video for domestic violence, and substituting the body-worn video for domestic violence evidence camera. There are other educational pieces of information that are disseminated, sometimes from my office and other times from Education and Training Command, that deals with certain changes to the policy and standard operating procedures as we move through different phases and different times.
You said that every user of body-worn video gets training in it.
Just, Mr. Coffey?
Must indicate, I don't intend to stand up very often, sorry, Chief Commissioner, could I just inquire, maybe the commission staff could turn the amplifier on, the, it is difficult to hear the witness, because it doesn't seem to be coming through the microphone for the gallery.
All right, can we see if we can boost the amplification? The microphone, I think, is in the usual position, close to you, Assistant Commissioner, so that shouldn't be the problem, but let's see how it goes now, can you?
I'll try and speak up.
That's, someone's pushed the right switch, I think.
Thank you.
You said that every user of body-worn video gets training in it.
Yes.
I'm shortly going to take you to the standard operating procedures and the difference between police in uniform, as opposed to police who are not in uniform, so for example, conducting plain clothes duties.
Yes.
When you say every user of body-worn video gets training, does that cover all police?
Yes, so the body-worn video SOPs indicate that every user of body-worn video must receive the two-hour face-to-face training.
That training relates to a number of topics about functionality, actual use.
Yes.
What training is there on the times or the circumstances in which body-worn video should be used?
So that is covered in the face-to-face training outline, it's also covered in the standard operating procedures. Sorry, the standard operating procedures talk about using best judgment, and takes officers to different scenarios where it would be appropriate to activate body-worn video.
What role do the standard operating procedures have for police in their day-to-day duties? Are they available? There are SOPs, standard operating procedures, on a number of different topics. Are they available for police to access?
Yes, they're available for police to access, as well as their supervisors and managers, and obviously able to refer to them at any time.
Ongoing training, is that provided in relation to body-worn video?
There are, there is reminders sent out, but in relation to the training, it really takes the form of changes to the standard operating procedures, where there might be other procedures introduced, for example, using body-worn videos at search warrant operations, and then also for the domestic violence capability. The refresher training is really probably around the initial training that's provided for the two-hour sessions.
When you talk about domestic violence capability, are you referring there to the use of an interview with a complainant in a domestic violence matter, recorded on body-worn video as evidence in chief at later court proceedings?
Yes, that's correct.
In terms of the standard operating procedures that you just referred to and changes being introduced, how does that in fact take place, that there are changes to the standard operating procedures?
So minor changes, for example, changing it to Police Area Command instead of Local Area Command, I can authorise those. If there's changes that move from the spirit and intent of the Commissioner's executive team, then any changes or any amendments must then go back through to the Commissioner's executive team for endorsement.
I'll ask you now about access to body-worn video by police. How's that done? Is body-worn video kept in a certain part of a station? How is it accessed?
Yes, so when a user wants to sign out a body-worn video, there's a, it's called a palm vein scanner, they put, the officer will put their hand onto that scanner, and then a body-worn video camera will be allocated. Once it's returned, that, there'll be an automatic upload of any material that's on that body-worn video, and it goes into the body-worn video system. If an officer, an officer must then create an event, which is then able to be tagged into the body-worn video product, and then the officer determines what is evidence, workplace health and safety, or a potential complaint, and then tags that body-worn video product into that event. That then moves the body-worn video from the body-worn video system into the View IMS system, which then creates a more, a greater time for retention of that file. If the, if the file is not tagged, then it will be held on hand for the next six months, and then it will be deleted after that period of time.
When you use the word tagged, what do you mean by that?
So that's just a, we call it tagged because in the system, it just identifies the body-worn video product, or the images, and that then gets allocated to the event.
Do all police have access to body-worn video?
Not all police, so you have to be a registered user on the body-worn video system, and you need to go in, and there's a multi-factor identification to make sure that we know who the users are. There would be police that would not be in that body-worn video system, it really is for operational use.
Operational is a word that comes up a number of times in the standard operating procedures. Can I ask you now, just before I go to the detail of those procedures, what does operational mean?
So operational is generally in uniform, but not necessarily, and responding to calls for assistance from members of the community. It does not necessarily include police officers that may well be performing duties inside a police station, but certainly when they're outside, performing duties, interacting with the community, whether for the purposes of investigation or other policing functions, then that would be considered operational.
The subject matter of this investigation involved proactive policing at night time in plain clothes, with cars not identified as police cars, with the goals including to observe if anything took place, any criminal offences, and if necessary, to arrest people involved.
Yes.
Does that come within the definition of operational policing?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Commissioner, Chief Commissioner, I'd ask that Your Honour, Chief Commissioner, consider making a non-publication order over this aspect in terms of the technology and the resources for a number of reasons. The first is that it is still being considered and developed, and although the community might have an understanding from the television, media, et cetera, about the capabilities of the police force, the confirmation precisely presents some difficulties. Certainly, it's relevant for your Chief Commissioner to hear this evidence, though.
There's no difficulty with that, Chief Commissioner, I was just, there's no difficulty with that, I was just going to reduce the evidence.
Miss Lee has just.
Your Honour, I can't see why this information can't be on the record, I mean, it is an issue of public interest, it's not actually referring to anything in terms of police investigations, but just in terms of the process and difficulties with implementation.
Mr. Fernandez, do you want to say anything further about this?
Yes, I support a non-publication order about this particular aspect, because matters such as availability, rollout, and resources are legitimately matters that are solely for the New South Wales Police, they don't need to be publicly available.
I propose to give some short reasons. The Commission is currently holding a public hearing as part of an investigation. This is not a court case or a trial. From time to time, there may well be matters raised which attract sensitivity because of operational or technical reasons associated with contemporary policing. The current witness is giving evidence about body-worn video. This is a developing area, both in this state and in other jurisdictions. I'm satisfied that it is appropriate to make a non-publication order with respect to that part of the evidence which has recently been given, which concerns areas of technical development with respect to this facility. I would request those appearing to have regard to the fact that this order is about to be made with respect to further areas of questioning. If there are areas of questioning which are relevant to this investigation, but which may attract the same application, I will consider that application at the time. This is, in a sense, a variation on a form of public interest immunity claim well-known to the courts. Now, the extent of the application, Mr. Coffey, is to seek a non-publication order with respect to the last question and answer, is that so?
That's so, Chief Commissioner.
That's the question that starts, are there sufficient body-worn video, and ending in the answer given by Assistant Commissioner Crandell, handheld devices.
Yes, Chief Commissioner.
I make a non-publication order with respect to the question of counsel assisting commencing, are there sufficient body-worn video, and ending in the answer with the words handheld devices. That non-publication order is made for the purpose of this investigation. That part of the transcript will be excised before the transcript is made public. I should indicate that the Commission is well aware of the developments being undertaken by the police in this area, and these developments include areas of technical sensitivity, and in due course, no doubt, there will be public information revealed with respect to these developments. But it is not appropriate that there be incidental revelations of what is a work in progress for the moment, and that is further explanation for the order which I've made. Does that cover it, Mr. Coffey?
May please, Commissioner, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Fernandez.
I'm going to ask for MTS 81 to be placed up on the screen, which is the Body-Worn Video Standard Operating Procedures, as at November of 2022. The barcode for the first page is eight, six, two, zero, one, eight, two. And I'll go to ask for page four, which ends with the numbers one, eight, five, to be turned up, please. Assistant Commissioner Crandell, can you see before you the Commission's forward to the standard operating procedures?
Yes, I can.
The second paragraph refers to a requirement to wear body-worn video cameras on a mandatory basis, where practicable, when operationally deployed in uniform, to perform a response policing role.
Yes.
Does that indicate that it relates particularly to uniformed police who are called out to investigate complaints of whatever nature they may be?
Yes.
In the next paragraph, the third paragraph on that page, the forward notes that activation of body-worn video cameras is required when circumstances to commence recording are anticipated evolving or actually occurring. There is some later description of the appropriate times to use body-worn video, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll take you to that. In the fourth paragraph on that page, the first sentence refers to, it is clear that body-worn video recordings support operational policing activities. Can you see that?
Yes, I can.
Now, that term operational policing is mentioned a number of times in the standard operating procedures. You have given an answer in response to a situation that I put to you, stating that in that situation, there would be operational policing. Is there a definition in the standard operating procedures about what operational policing means?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Would it be useful to?
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. There is, there is a footnote that indicates what operational policing is in accordance to be consistent with the TASER SOPs, as I recall.
Is, is that, perhaps I can have the page with the barcode ending eight, seven brought up, please. Go to the very bottom of that page to the footnote.
Yes.
I wonder if that could be zoomed in, please. You can see there's a footnote that refers to operational response. Is that what you were referring to?
Look, I think, yes, it was, yes.
Just in terms of that term, operational policing, and operational policing is used elsewhere, isn't there a benefit to actually defining what operational policing is?
Yes, I think so. I think, I think operational response is more restrictive than operational policing, I think that's a broader term. I think operational policing is used in the SOPs, because that's a term that's commonly used in policing, but I think it would be helpful to have a definition section.
Is that something that could be considered?
Certainly.
Particularly as later on in the standard operating procedures, there's reference to overt policing, which would be clearly understood as operational policing, but there's also mention of being in plain clothes, which might not be understood in that same way. Do you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Could the next page be turned up, please, ending with the barcode one, eight, six? This is page five of the standard operating procedure. Are you able to read there in the second paragraph that there's reference to body-worn video cameras supporting operational policing activities?
Yes.
If you go to the fourth paragraph on that page, there's a reference to the use of body-worn video cameras being incident-specific.
Yes.
And looking at the next, the next line, the cameras will be worn on a police officer's uniform or clothes in an overt manner. Can you see that?
Yes, I can.
There is a, there is a difference between a, a practical difference between a uniformed police officer wearing body-worn, a body-worn video camera, as opposed to a police officer undertaking duties in plain clothes, wearing a body-worn video camera, is that right?
Yes.
You might be asked some questions a little later about this, but has any issue ever been brought to your attention about the practicality of wearing a body-worn video camera for a police officer in plain clothes?
Yes, so the expectation, as I understand it, would be that a plainclothes officer would not be expected to wear it on their suit or in plain clothes, because that would defeat the purpose of the undercover nature of the duties that they're perhaps performing. But there is reference in the SOPs to using the camera, so the use of the camera would require an overtness about it, whether that be worn or that be held, to make it known that the body-worn camera is being, is in use.
If a police officer in plain clothes did not want to make it overt for operational reasons?
Yes.
The camera can be carried in a pocket or somewhere else, is that right?
Yes, it can.
And then it can be taken out and then activated.
Yes, and that would be the process, that would be most appropriate.
At the bottom of that page, in terms of the introduction, there are a number of there are a number of references to body worn video camera equipment being used in a number of different situations. The first one is being used by New South Wales police officers in the lawful execution of their duties. But that would entail everything an officer does in the course of his or her workday in an operational aspect, wouldn't it?
I think that needs to be read in conjunction with the comment that you made before in relation to incident specificity.
And it goes on that first note there to say, police will use their judgment when deciding when to use it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And there's further guidance in relation to that later in the SOPs.
Can I ask you to turn to the third matter on that page? It says, body worn video supports conventional forms of evidence gathering. It does not replace them. The first sentence is, body worn video devices operate as a modern day equivalent of a police notebook and provide a contemporaneous record of observations and events in the field. Is there a potential difficulty there that instead of making a note, police are taking out body worn video cameras for all sorts of reasons that wouldn't otherwise be considered as appropriate?
I think the context is in terms of evidence gathering. So, for example, you wouldn't use a body worn video to record something and then not necessarily seize it. It may well be appropriate for a police officer to indicate circumstances onto the record as to why they exercised the power or why they reacted in the way that they did. Or in fact, they could use their standard notebook to make entries in relation to those reasons.
I'll later take you to evidence in these proceedings about the use of, in one case of one specific case of body worn video camera to conduct an interview with a young person and to obtain admissions. But if there's a process whereby a police officer makes a note in a notebook that a child doesn't wish to be interviewed, is it possible that that part of the standard operating procedures might encourage police to put a young person on a body worn video camera to note a refusal?
I don't know whether I would say encouragement. I think that if a police officer has the body worn video activated, for example, there may be reasons to continue that activation. There may be reasons not to. And I think this guidance is really saying that, you know, if you think of when you use your notebook, you use your notebook to record details of incidents, particularly when you're talking to people in relation to criminal matters or recording crime scenes or other policing functions. And we're simply saying that this is an acceptable way to record those matters. I don't believe it would encourage police to necessarily use the body worn video when they don't need to. But it certainly is. When we equate it to a police notebook, we're saying if you think about what you use your notebook for, you may well then think about what you use your body worn video for.
Last for the next page of the standard operating procedures to be brought up, please. And I wonder if we could go to the middle of the page and zoom in on that text about when to wear body worn video. Paragraph under that heading, you can see in the second sentence, once again, there's reference to all operational police will be trained in the use of body worn video. Can you see that?
Yes, I can.
In the second paragraph under that heading, there's a a reference to all police officers wearing police uniform whilst engaged in duties of operational response must wear practicable where as part of their uniform, a body worn video camera.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
The next sentence is as follows. Police engaged in proactive and or investigative duties should also take and use body worn video cameras in support of their policing activities. Can you see that?
Yes, I can.
Does that include the situation of police engaging in proactive or investigative duties while in plain clothes?
Yes.
Now, if you look at the next paragraph, there's reference to use of body worn video camera worn by a police officer wearing uniform or plain clothes. And in that case, it being overt wearing of the camera. Can I take you back to the second paragraph? Given that last sentence about police being engaged in proactive and or investigative duties, would you consider that there'd be some benefit in making clear in the standard operating procedures that police engaged in proactive and or investigative duties, including being in plain clothes, should also take and use body worn video cameras? Would that be a useful clarification?
Yeah, look, I can certainly consider that clarification, albeit the understanding in the organisation at an operational level of proactive and investigative duties would draw that conclusion. But to be crystal clear, I see no problem in adding that clarification.
When you say the understanding in the operation, it's about 17,000 police or thereabouts. Is that right?
Yes.
There are going to be different understandings between different police about what is required in terms of the use of a body worn video camera. Would that be correct to say?
There's inevitably differences of interpretation. The body worn video SOPs have been carefully constructed after a great deal of consultation to make it as clear as possible.
Is that a clarification that you'd take on notice and to consider?
Yes, I would. Yes.
Turning to the next page, ending in the barcode 88. I'll just note, if the bottom part of the page could be zoomed in on, please. There is guidance set out in the standard operating procedures about when body worn video cameras should be used.
Yes.
And if I can ask for the page ending in the barcode 190, it's page nine of the standard operating procedures. What's evident from that page is there's also guidance about when not to use body worn video cameras and when it may not be appropriate to use the equipment. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
I'm going to take you now to evidence that's been received in this investigation about different ways that body worn video has been used. I'm firstly going to take you to, go to ask for exhibit MTS 86 to be put on the screen. The barcode is 8620251. If that can be zoomed in on, please. Could I just give you a moment to read that to yourself?
Yes.
This is a part of a police statement of facts relating to a child where the child was given advice and declined to take part in a recorded interview. But it appears that the interview was conducted on body worn video instead and information contained. The evidence before this investigation is that that's not an unusual occurrence. It's happened more than once. Just looking at that entry there about police using body worn video to question a child after the child's declined to participate in an electronic interview, would you accept that that's an inappropriate use of body worn video?
Yes. The protections afforded prior to being interviewed would preclude the recording in any fashion, I would think.
Bearing in mind the evidence before this investigation, which is this is not uncommon, that this does happen, would you consider there to be a benefit in including in the standard operating procedures that this is a specific situation where body worn video cameras should not be used?
Yeah, unless, of course, the protections are being afforded to them. So I don't think the medium of use, this is my personal opinion. I don't think the medium of recording is necessarily an issue. But certainly, the protections and the advice that's provided and the commissions required for young people would need to be covered prior to any recording being undertaken.
What it appears took place here is a particular police involved knew that the young person did not take part in a recorded interview.
Yep.
And instead of then use their body worn video camera, that would not be an appropriate use of the body worn video camera.
Yes, it would.
Is there a benefit then in that being stated clearly in the standard operating procedures?
Yes, I think the processes can certainly be clarified.
I'm going to take you to another exhibit in these proceedings. That's MTS 67, which has the barcode 8543606. I'm going to give you the opportunity, Assistant Commissioner, to read these emails, but I'll ask you to read the bottom email first. Let us know when you'd like the page turned over.
Yes, if I could.
Could the next page be brought up, please? I'll ask for the previous page now to be brought up to the email at the top of that page. And I'll ask for that to be zoomed in on for you to read that to yourself, please.
Yes.
Previously, you mentioned that the medium was not necessarily important, the medium for the recording of the information from the child. You'll see at the very bottom of that page, this is an email from a solicitor which referred specifically to the child in that case not wishing to provide a statement of any description, either handwritten or to record a refusal on in front of the interview machine or a video recorder or body worn video. Can you see that?
Yes, I can.
What you can also see is a response from one particular police officer who has a different view of the use of the body worn video camera and how it applies in that particular situation.
Yes.
To come back to a question I asked you earlier. This illustrates, doesn't it, that different police have different understandings about when it's appropriate to use the body worn video camera?
Yes.
And it's preferable not to have an operational understanding, but to make it clear in the standard operating procedures what the situation should actually be. Would you agree?
Yes, I agree.
Chief Commissioner, there's one other aspect of evidence from Assistant Commissioner Crandell that I've only put the Assistant Commissioner on notice of this morning, and I would ask for him to return on Thursday to give that evidence, which the Assistant Commissioner has agreed to. For the time being, that completes my questions.
Could I just ask you this? It has sometimes been said by police in the field who have not turned on their body worn video in a particular situation, and I'm talking here about uniformed officers, that it's a it's a cumbersome process to turn it on. It takes time to move from the switch on to when it will start recording matters of that sort are put forward. I'm speaking quite generally, partly to avoid the type of issue which has been raised, but are practicalities of that sort real or realistic in your own experience in this field?
No, I don't believe so, Your Honour. I don't see, I haven't heard of many without a malfunction occurring. I haven't heard of difficulties with activating. I mean, it's a very large button in the middle of the camera that's required to be depressed, which changes it from standby mode to recording mode. The light turns from green and flashes red to indicate to everybody that it is recording. And there's a 30 second back capture on that. So I haven't heard of that before unless there's been a malfunction.
And in a situation distant from the present one, in the sense that the officers in the field did not actually have body worn on them, so. But if a uniformed officer in the field was becoming involved in conversation with and perhaps a pursuit and interaction with someone who may be perceived to be a suspect, then there's no practical impediment to the body worn being activated to capture what happens.
No, not at all.
And in fact, that's what should happen under the SOPs, isn't it?
I would think so. If there's a suspect in relation to a criminal activity, absolutely best best practice is to record.
And if that's done, of course, if there's some interaction, physical interaction or other interaction, it will be captured on the body worn.
Yes.
And that's one of the invaluable aspects of having it in the first place.
That's one of the benefits that we outlined to better control behaviour of not only police but also perpetrators and reduce aspects of violence, which has been shown.
What the courts have certainly recognised, and I'm sure many in the field would recognise, that what in the past were often protracted court hearings involving incidents with people where charges may be laid for offensive conduct, resist arrest, assault police, et cetera, and you might find several police officers and possibly several witnesses on the defence side giving evidence with a magistrate usually being called upon to sort out and make findings. That rather protracted scenario can be, if not avoided completely, certainly greatly assisted by contemporary film evidence of what happens.
Absolutely. It assists not only the court processes but also guilty pleas where appropriate or not guilty pleas where appropriate.
It ultimately operates to assist and protect individual police officers who are doing the right thing.
Yes, it does. We've seen significant decline in complaints over the time because of body worn video.
And it assists the community as well by fostering greater confidence in what's happening with policing because it's a a form of immediate electronic evidence to indicate what happened.
Yeah, it provides confidence in the community, not only for the actions of perpetrators but also actions of police that they know are being recorded and police behaviour is appropriate.
Yes. Did you have any questions arising? Did you have any questions arising? Does anyone wish to ask any questions at this stage, bearing in mind what's been proposed by council assisting?
Only just one question to clarify with this witness, Chief Commissioner, about a question that you raised.
Yes.
Uh, about in the use with, uh, the ability to activate, activate the device easily. If I could just ask the Assistant Commissioner to also clarify that there is a thirty second back capture feature, um, maybe Chief Commissioner might be assisted by understanding how that technology works?
Yes.
Yes, so upon activation, thirty seconds back from the moment of activation will be captured, um, whi- which assists if there is a, uh, uh, if there's a, say, a physical altercation or something similar, then that feature allows us to back capture, uh, evidence that, that would not normally have been captured if it was, uh, consistent with only the button pressure.
Does the back capture catch both video and sound or just video?
Yes, video and sound.
Captures both?
Yes.
So if an officer activates it by pressing the button, it will operate to capture the past thirty seconds as well as everything that's happening thereafter?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I might just clarify this one part, Chief Commissioner, uh, and those persons that are present at the time in which the camera has been activated, uh, both the police officers but, for example, the members of the public are there, they'd become aware that the camera has activated by two loud beeps or alerts that come from the device and also in relation to a, a light that's shone, a different coloured red or green light.
Yes, so it moves from a green light to solid light to a, um, flashing red light to indicate that it's recording and there will be beeps that'll indicate that the recording has happened, which is, which is really the time that, uh, the officer, uh, if able, should then be issuing the warning that anything they say or do can be, will be recorded by body worn video.
And Assistant Commissioner, one of the reasons why, uh, that, that both is a green light to indicate standby and a red light to indicate recording and these audible sounds is because body worn video is an overt system, uh, and the people that are being recorded are to be aware that in fact they're being recorded by this device.
Yes, and body worn video should never be used for covert.
Thank you, Chief Commissioner.
There, there's a section in the Surveillance Devices Act which was inserted when body worn video was introduced to, um, directly deal with that aspect, was there not?
Yes, I think the, the legislation, um, indicated that it is to be worn overtly, but we expanded upon that in this policy, in the standard operating procedures to say that it's not to be secreted, it's not to be hidden, it's to be overt, which means clearly, clearly being able to be seen and then there should be some acknowledgement of the device from the person being recorded.
And the common scenario and is the officer should say to a person, for example, someone pulled over at the side of the road should say, after identifying themselves, that, um, this conversation's being recorded by body worn video and that's part of police procedure in that setting at least.
Absolutely, it's, um, it's al- it's almost an introduction to a caution to say that, um, whatever you say or do will be recorded, um, and that, that warning must be given upon activation, upon any body worn video activation.
I've only got one very small additional topic just about plainclothes that I think might assist the commission.
Yes.
Assistant Commissioner, you asked some questions by council assisting in relation to the policy position around plainclothes policing officers, uh, in terms of wearing body worn cameras. Firstly, I just want to make the distinction, uh, there is a distinction between, say, for example, undercover police officers who might be those persons working in controlled operations, deploying, uh, for the purposes of engaging under the Controlled Operations Act and wearing covert surveillance items.
Yes.
And that's a difference to those, for example, plainclothes policing officers who might work at a police area command, a police district or a region enforcement squad, who might be known as the cargo shorts and t-shirt gang.
Yes, absolutely.
Accepting that the policy currently mandates the use of body worn footage for uniformed police officers who are performing operational duties outside of the police station, uh, moving to plainclothes police officers or criminal investigators, detectives who might wear a suit, uh, certainly it's the case that the, the commission of police expects that where appropriate, they should utilise body worn footage, is that correct?
Yes.
That doesn't necessarily mean that if I'm a plainclothes police officer in, say, cargo pants and a t-shirt patrolling a particular area in my command, that I would need to have the body worn footage of, sorry, redraw that, the body worn camera on my clothes, but at the time that I maybe stop and speak to someone and exercise a power, there's no reason, uh, that the camera couldn't be either pulled out and put onto my clothes or held to record my interaction?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, do you agree that as a result of this particular inquiry, Operation Mantis, that it's clear that the body worn standard operating procedures could be clarified to provide greater levels of examples to the police force, particularly plainclothes officers, to demonstrate that, that expectation that they don't need to actually wear it walking around, but as soon as they exercise a power, there's an expectation that where the device is available, that they should be using it?
Yes, I think that would be very fair to do that. I think that, um, the SOPs were he- heavily concentrated towards uniformed officers. Um, and I think, uh, th- there, there does need to be a level of guidance for, for officers in plainclothes, uh, officers in plainclothes, as you've announced the, the distinction between them.
Thank you. And, and that's my, um, plainclothes gang, Your Honour, not the police forces.
Sure. Just, just add amount to this, that if, if, if officers in the field who are plainclothes but who may well interact with members of the public, whether for the purpose of questioning, arrest. And in that sense, change from covert to overt, that when that point is reached, it is more than highly desirable that the officer extract the body worn video if it's in the pocket, attach it and turn it on.
Yes.
Which will immediately back capture the past thirty seconds as well as what follows.
Yes.
And, um, in that way, there's no compromise of the covert phase, but there's the benefit of the camera for the overt phase. And, um, an issue in this particular investigation, of course, is, um, a physical interaction between a plainclothes police officer and the young person is not assisted by any elec- electronic evidence, um, and that's a difficulty in itself.
Yeah, I, I think, Your Honour, there, there could be occasions where they may, for whatever reason, not wish to record something, but, but if that's the case, then, then there needs to be reasons provided as to why they, they've chosen not to do that.
The, um, this is perhaps an issue that we'll come back to, but the use of body worn video in other jurisdictions has been considered and it's an ongoing policing issue, I think, throughout the world, not just in this state or in Australia, but what consequences there may be or what expectations there may be if it's not activated is something in itself which is under consideration.
Yes.
Perhaps I'll leave it at that for the moment. Now, Mr Fernandez, um, uh, the Assistant Commissioner's very helpfully attended this morning, but what is posed, I'll come back to Miss Lee in a moment, but I'll just hear what Mr Fernandez wants to say.
After any other questions, Chief Commissioner, if Assistant Commissioner Crandell can be excused until Thursday morning at ten a.m., please.
All right. Yes, yes, Miss Lee.
Yes, I have some questions for the Assistant Commissioner, Chief Commissioner.
Are they dealing with, with the specifics that council assisting has raised or more general matters as to which there'll be an opportunity on Thursday?
Uh, they're dealing with, uh, tagging, um, Chief Commissioner, uh, the discretion and recording.
All right, well, well, let's ask them and if, if you, if you'd like to proceed, uh, I want to avoid duplication, that's the main point.
Yes, of course.
Bearing in mind, he, he'll be coming back.
Uh, thank you for your time, Assistant Commissioner. My name's Sam Lee, I work at Redfern Legal Centre and representing, uh, the young person, Y P M one.
Thank you.
You mentioned that body worn video footage is used for the purpose to also reduce complaints. Do you also agree that it's used for the purpose of potential civil proceedings against police?
Yes.
In regards to my particular client where he, there's an allegation of excessive force, uh, used by a police officer, there were four officers involved in this operation and none of those officers had body worn video footage on them. There's been discussion this morning about the use of judgment of police to turn on their or use body worn video footage. In this situation before the court, uh, do you think the judgment has been used correctly?
I, I don't really know the full circumstances of this case. I know at a high level, um, which council assisting sort of took me through, but I haven't actually read the details of it. So di- difficult, uh, I'm, I'm happy to do that if you, you would like me to and...
Do you mean correctly in accordance with the current standard operating procedures or what they should be, Miss Lee? This is one of the difficulties you see. And that's why I think this, like, that, that question may be the subject of waiting to hear what further evidence there is, but, um, and it's, it's been answered in any event.
Yes.
So next, next question, thank you, Miss Lee.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. In regards to, uh, the tagging procedure, as you've said that, uh, one, it's the discretion as to whether the, the officer has the body worn video footage on them, on the actual device, and two, it's whether they turn it on.
No, I haven't, I haven't actually said that.
Well, okay, I'll say, uh, I'll ask you a different way. In terms of body worn video footage, uh, for it to operate, they must have it on them, is that right?
So, yes, it needs to be worn by a...
Yes. And then it needs to be turned on?
Yes.
And then even if it's turned on, when they get back to the police station, they are required to tag it if the officer thinks it's of evidentiary value, is that correct?
That's correct.
If it is tagged, if I could just clarify, how, how long is that body worn video kept for?
If it's tagged?
Yes.
Then it, um, we have a, a, a platform that allows us to retire, um, body worn video in relation to the offences that it relates to in accordance with the, um, with the relevant acts.
And if it is tagged, is there anything they have to input on the COPs system?
Yes, so they, they have to create an event so that the tag can go to an event. Um, and then that, that body worn video footage then goes to a different system to activate the, the retention for longer periods of time.
And is it mandatory to tag body worn video footage if force has been used?
I, I, I can't recall whether that's written down somewhere, um, I, I, I would think that would be appropriate.
If that's not in the current SOPs, do you think it should be in the SOPs?
Uh, I think we've given some guidance in relation to use of force and when body worn video ought to be activated.
And for those body worn video footage that is not tagged, what happens to that? You say it's deleted, when is it deleted?
Uh, six months.
And does anyone check that, um, tagged body worn video footage?
Yes, so there's a requirement for a supervisory inspection, um, of uploads at each command. I, I believe it's, uh, one percent of the total uploads and that would include body worn video footage that is and is not tagged.
And so, uh, who actually looks at that body worn video footage?
It's a requirement for each sup- uh, for supervisors as a collective at, uh, each individual command.
So, for example, if a supervisor looks at a body worn video footage and, and sees possible incident or a issue around use of force, that, uh, person is then required to do what?
That, well, that person would either re- report that, um, for
To whom, sorry?
Report that through the chain of command, so to duty officer or the commander to indicate there is an issue, uh, whether that be on tagged or untagged footage. Uh, I think there is guidance in the standard operating procedures that says that, um, if you don't tag something that ought to be tagged, then there may well be consequences for that as well.
Thank you. In regards, just to go back to that point of civil proceedings and body worn video use for that, do you, what's your understanding, or I should say, the limitation period for civil proceedings is six years, uh, to bring a potential case against the police, for example, excessive force. Do you think that keeping a body worn video footage should be in line with that?
Uh, with, with potential civil cases?
Yes.
I think, I think that would mean we would be retaining just about all body worn video footage, which would be untenable.
But wouldn't that just be the tagged body worn video footage?
Not necessarily. There, there may be instances where, uh, civil claims are bought that the officer hasn't, um, seen that there's a criminal offence or paid it any attention. Um, in that case, it could be, could be any, any body worn video. Um, but it, it, the, on- once it's tagged though, it, it is in alignment with the archives requirements. So i- it's actually retained for quite an extensive period of time, once it's tagged.
What period is that, sorry?
Well, it depends on the offence. So if it's, if it's a homicide, it'll be retained forever. Um, if it's, if it's an assault, it may well be seven years, if it's a sexual assault, it may well be twenty-five years and it depends on
That's based on criminal proceedings, is that right? Not civil proceedings?
No, that's right. It's, it's rel- it's related to the actual offence, as I understand it, the offences that's, um, that's been investigated.
Okay, thank you. Uh, in, in just in terms of the covert, um, sorry, uh, uniform and un-uniform police, could you just explain the, the distinction, I guess, in work of uniformed, uh, and un-uniformed police? Is there a different type of work those who aren't in uniform do?
Yeah, so, um, pe- police that aren't in uniform could be performing what they, what we call proactive duty. So that could be, you know, jeans and a t-shirt, um, wa- watching people at hotels or whatever. Or it could be, um, officers that w- wear suits each day, which are predominantly investigation, so they're the detectives. Um, you also have other areas, um, for example, specialist areas in State Crime Command, you have an undercover branch, which is what Mr Coffey referred to before, um, and there's also surveillance branches, there's also other, other areas where officers would necessarily be not in uniform and would be in, in, in different various dress.
Yes. Would you say then that the type of work those who aren't in uniform do are kind of higher up in the seriousness of policing work?
So- sometimes, yes. Um, I think the uniform officers, i- if, if I could categorise it generally, um, have more interaction with members of the community, um, and, and less of a, um, less, less of, of a planning, I suppose, uh, for incidents to occur, l- less awareness of an incident that might occur, whereas police officers in plainclothes or, or investigations have more of an opportunity to see when there may be, uh, an exercise of powers, an arrest made. And, and when you say more serious, I, I, as a generalisation, you could say that in, in, um, in investigative field. Uh, the proactive team, potentially not, it just depends on what they get called to.
Yes, thank you. Do, uh, police officers who is, who are not in uniform, wear guns?
Yes.
Yes.
They must.
They wear badges?
Yes.
Yes. So what's the difficulty in wearing body worn video footage?
I, I don't, well, the, the, the gun and the badge can be concealed, uh, whereas the body worn video should not be concealed if it's being used and activated. Carrying the body worn video, I don't see that as an issue necessarily, um, but the actual activation, I would not want to see police officers in suits or, um, or plainclothes. or plain clothes in jeans and t-shirts with a body worn video on because obviously that would indicate to anybody that they are police officers.
But don't they have to tell police, the people that they're police officers, when they're chasing someone, for example?
No, if they, if they, if they're to use the body worn video, then they should identify themselves as a police officer and provide evidence that they are a police officer. But not if they're in pursuit or anything like that, I wouldn't have thought.
Thank you. So just a couple more questions. You said just to ask you one final question, just in terms of identification. During this examination, we heard evidence about body worn video footage being used to identify young people. Have, do you see that as an appropriate use of body worn video footage?
It would depend on the circumstances, I suppose.
For example, the person has not committed a crime or there is no incident, as it says on the SOPs. Is identification a reason to use body worn video footage?
It may well be that the police need to identify the person as a missing person, for example.
If it's not a missing person?
You'd have to give me the circumstances. I'm speculating and I don't wish to do that.
Wouldn't you need to identify the stated purpose here, Miss Lee? Was it not that the uniform police were doing bail checks? And if the young persons were at home and they're spoken to by police, then I would imagine the body worn would be going and would capture their clothing, which may assist in identifying them later on. Is that your understanding, Miss Lee, of what was said to be the case here?
That's correct, Chief Commissioner.
What do you say about that scenario, Assistant Commissioner?
I think that's entirely appropriate. I think police officers use body worn video for intelligence purposes. But that, I don't think they're even using it for an intelligence purpose. It's appropriate that they put the body worn video on at the time of checking on bail. And if that allows a police officer to see what clothing a young person is wearing and they become a suspect in another case, then I think that's good police work.
Sorry, you just reminded me of one final question. You mentioned when Mr Fernandez asked you about the use of body worn video footage recording at the police station. You said that you had no problem with the recording itself. It's about the issue that they're talking about. But body worn video footage can be used not in a particular room. Is that an issue? It could be out in the cells.
No, I guess what I'm saying is that when the, when the formal interview process goes through and all the questions are asked by the custody manager, if, for example, there was a malfunction of a, of an ERIS machine or some other way to record, I don't see now or certainly into the future any problem with actually using the body worn video camera as a recording device in certain circumstances. That's what I'm saying. I don't think it should be, well, the ERIS machine isn't being, isn't available or for whatever reason, therefore we can't conduct an electronic interview. I think you probably could. That's not, sorry, sorry, that's not necessarily in the SOPs as it stands, but I'm just thinking into the future. Given, given my current position, I would like to see the platforms more agnostic.
So they would then have discretion whether to tag them or not?
No, well, it would be, it would be very unusual for that not to be tagged if they're interviewing somebody.
But they'd still have discretion?
There's, there's not
That's what's in the SOPs at the moment.
Well, no, it doesn't say discretion in the SOPs. It says to use your judgment.
Yes.
And I would think that a police officer would use their judgment in favour of retaining something where they've interviewed somebody on body worn video.
Well, in my case, four officers didn't wear body worn video footage and use their judgment not to.
Yes, but you're talking about a different set of circumstances. You've just put circumstances to me where an officer has used their body worn video to record an interview. That's a different situation with respect.
But they could still have judgment not to tag.
There's no judgement in the SOPs. They got to, they need to use, sorry, there's no discretion in the SOPs, they need to use their good judgement.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Miss Lee. Anyone, any further questions before the Assistant Commissioner stood down and we take the mid-morning break? All right. Thank you, Assistant Commissioner. If you're in a position to return on Thursday morning where there'll be some further questions at that point,
Thank you, Your Honour.
if you can step down for the moment, thank you.
Thank you.
What time do you suggest we resume?
Twenty minutes, please, Chief Commissioner, five to twelve.
All right, yes. Commissioner will adjourn until five to twelve.
All right, fourteen.
Yes, I call Assistant Commissioner Peter Cotter.
Yes, if you could come forward, thank you, Assistant Commissioner.
You swear by Almighty God that the evidence that you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you, have a seat.
Thank you, Chief Commissioner.
If you would, Assistant Commissioner.
No declaration, thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Mr Coffey. Yes, have a seat, thanks, Assistant Commissioner. Yes, Mr Fernandez.
Can you please state your name?
Peter Norman Cotter, surname spelt C O double T E R.
Are you presently an Assistant Commissioner of Police?
I am.
Are you the Region Commander for the Southern Region? A region which goes right down to the Victorian border.
Yes, I am.
Have you previously served in the New South Wales Police Force for about thirty-nine years?
That's correct.
Among a number of appointments that you have had, were you the Commissioner of the New South Wales Crime Commission for a period of just under two years?
Yes.
Assistant Commissioner, are you the corporate spokesperson for the New South Wales Police Force for Custodies and Corrections?
I am.
You have attended to give evidence about particular aspects of this investigation as you understand systemic issues relating to New South Wales Police, particularly with young people, is that correct?
Yes.
You've provided a statement to the commission, which is now an exhibit that's going to be called MTS ninety-four. Do you have a copy of your statement there with you?
I have one in my bag, I can
Would you, would you like access to that statement?
Yeah, I didn't bring it up, I wasn't sure, but I thought it might come up on the screen.
That's all right, yes, there's no problem if
I can get it.
It'll, I think it's going to be brought up to you by
That'll be fantastic, thank you.
Have you also marked
The coffee giving you your bags, sir.
Do you also have the standard operating procedures which you've marked up for your own use?
Yes, I have, I've got a, I haven't marked them, it's a clean copy, but I have them with me, yes. So I can, I'll bring out my statement. I've got the charge room SOPs, for example, and a copy of the handbook as it relates at the moment and other material in my bag if required.
Assistant Commissioner, I'm going to be asking you questions about systemic issues that have been identified in this investigation and specifically the situation when children are interviewed by police after they've had legal advice and have accepted that legal advice not to be interviewed and that legal advice has been provided to investigating police. Do you understand that?
Yes, I do.
I'm also going to be asking you about the role of the custody manager in some specific respects. Do you understand that?
Yes, I do.
Just in terms of training of custody managers, is that an aspect which you will, you've asked Sergeant Edgell, E D G E double L, to be available to give specific evidence about?
Yes, I have, and he's here today before this hearing. I thought it was most appropriate that somebody engaged on a daily basis and the formation of the education packages, who lives and breathes it way more than I do in that specifics, come and give the most relevant evidence to this hearing.
I'm also going to be asking you about a number of parts of the statement that you've prepared, addressing a number of matters relevant to this investigation. Do you understand that?
Thank you.
Assistant Commissioner, can I start by indicating the evidence in general terms by both Legal Aid New South Wales and the Aboriginal Legal Service? Is that many police are acting properly, although there are a number of exceptions to those police acting properly. I'm going to be asking you about those exceptions which appear to be systemic issues within New South Wales Police. So the starting point is many police are acting properly. I'm going to be asking you about questions where that's not actually taking place. I'm going to start with the issue of children being interviewed after legal advice when children have accepted that legal advice not to be interviewed. Do you understand that?
Yes.
I'm going to ask for the, there is a memorandum which is in force between New South Wales Police and Legal Aid New South Wales, which has been in force since about 2004. That's a memorandum you refer to at paragraph forty-five of your statement, is that correct?
Yes.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for the relevant part of that memorandum to be placed up on the screen. This is a page with the barcode eight, five, four, three, five, six, nine. This is from the Legal Aid New South Wales submission to the commission, which you've had a chance to read. I'm going to refer to paragraph four point one, which sets out a protocol between New South Wales Police and Legal Aid New South Wales. And it says as follows. If the young person exercises their right to silence, the investigating officer should record this in COPS event as, quote, interview declined, end quote. The custody manager should also record in the general comments of the custody management record that the young person declined an interview. Can you see that?
Yes.
You are aware that that is the position of the New South Wales Police Force in relation to that particular circumstance described there, is that correct?
Yes.
This has been the position since for about the last nineteen years or so. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
I'm going to ask for a, an additional document to be placed up on the screen. It's a circular from 2005. I'm going to ask for MTS ninety-one to be placed up on the screen, please. And the barcode is eight, six, two, zero, two, six, one. Could the right-hand side of that page be zoomed in on, please? Just going to ask you, this is a police circular from March of 2005 relating to the recording of refusals by suspects to participate in an ERIS. The relevant part of the circular is this. You do not have the power to compel or intimate to the suspect that they must participate in an electronically recorded interview for the purpose of recording their refusal. Record the refusal in your notebook and if appropriate, on the fact sheet. Can you see that?
Yes, I've got that, thank you.
That represents the position of the New South Wales Police Force in terms of recording of refusals. Is that correct?
Yes.
Could I ask you to turn to page forty-five of your report, please? A paragraph, I should say, paragraph forty-five. I wonder if that might be brought up. The barcode for that page is eight, six, two, zero, three, eight, seven. If paragraph forty-five could be zoomed in on, please. Assistant Commissioner, it may be an incomplete sentence, but this paragraph starts as, as identified in the legal aid submissions, the status of, and then there's a reference to the memorandum of understanding or the protocol which I've just taken you to. The protected admissions protocol, that's a separate position. The police circular that I've just taken you to about recording refusals and the code of practice, crime, capital C R I M E, and the police handbook amendments. Did you, are there some words missing there? You've made a reference to them.
It's probably more brevity rather than words missing. That paragraph in totality at forty-five and the A, B, C, D that follow are areas that I slash we, the organisation, consider that need to be taken away from this hearing. I slash we, the organisation, consider that need to be taken away from this hearing, and really pulled apart and examined in a collegiate way with some other people in this room as well, to understand what the position is, what it should look like, and to articulate in very clear fashion, perhaps in some cases in a way better way, for both sides, the police officer, and equally the vulnerable person or the suspect. So there's enormous clarity around what the rights are, what we can ask people to do, and equally what they are obliged to do versus what they may wish to do versus may, what is totally out of scope.
Isn't there clarity about those two documents that I've placed up on the, on the screen for you? There's the memorandum of understanding, which refers to the recording of an interview declined by investigating police and the custody manager. Is there not clarity about that situation then?
I think there needs to be more clarity, and I can, I can go to it.
Yes, what, what would you say?
Well, you put up two documents to me. The first one was around the right to silence. Now, the right to silence, clearly as we know, goes back way more than nineteen years or any other years for that matter, centuries. But we're talking about, that para, the first paragraph delineates between right to silence and legal advice and instructions, and also the wishes of the person, and the role that perhaps the vulnerable person's support person or guardian might have all in that process. So if I step through it, there's a number of points to that triangle that make up, I do not, I want to exercise my right to silence. Part one of it is clearly cogent and appropriate legal advice from a practitioner. Secondly, in the case of a vulnerable person, if we stick into those parameters, because I know that's fundamentally the scope of this hearing, that it is the vulnerable person's support person, whether that be a family member or some other member of the community respected, that falls within that ambit, comes along and there's discussions, particularly if it's around youth conferencing or the Young Offenders Act and protective missions and things like that, depending on the scope of the crime. And then notwithstanding clearly the vulnerability of the child, whether it be just through pure age or their cultural background, or their, or a physical or intellectual impairment, and obviously I include in that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander. There is the individual decision of the child, the vulnerable person as well. So there's three points to that triangle that make up the right to silence, not solely the legal advice is, don't talk. So I think that, that, so I think we need to step through that, instead of just one overarching paragraph, we need to step through each of those things, in my opinion.
That's the police position on the right to silence, is it, that there are three parts, legal advice, young person, support person?
Well, the right to silence is exercised by the, by the person, yes.
It's exercised by the young person.
Correct.
I wonder if the document with the barcode eight, five, four, three, five, six, nine could be put up on the screen again, please? I wonder if we can just focus on four point one, paragraph ten there, if that could be zoomed in on. What you've referred to is the role of the support person. You would expect that in almost every case, the support person is going to be a person who has no legal training, would that be correct?
Most probably, yes.
Have you yourself ever heard of a support person, a person who's present at an interview supporting a child who is legally trained?
No, I'm not aware of it, no.
Why is the New South Wales Police Force position that the support person needs to be factored in, in terms of the child's understanding of the right to silence?
They play an integral role with the, in providing that support role to the person, whether it be a family member, most often, or quite often a parent, or turned to some other member of the, of the respective member of the community.
But, as you can see, the relevant part of the memorandum of understanding, what this envisages is the child receives legal advice from a solicitor.
Yes.
If the child wishes to accept that legal advice...
Correct.
And that legal advice is communicated to police, that investigating police and the custody manager should make a recording in the COPS event and the custody management records that the interview is declined, can you see that?
Yes, I agree in totality with that. But all I was saying is that there is a, there is another side to this, particularly with a parent.
Just not understanding what that other side is. The child has had legal advice from a solicitor, and the legal advice has been communicated, and the memorandum relates to what notes are made by police of the child's wishes.
This is the child exercising their right to silence, accepting that advice and their instructions being, I wish to exercise my right to silence and not be interviewed.
Yes. What's the problem with that?
There is no problem with that.
You brought in the idea of the support person, can you just explain what you see as the relevance of the support person to this part of the memorandum of understanding?
Not specifically to that, no, but it is part of the, it is part of the picture.
Assume a situation where a child speaks to a support person, and there might be a change of mind or a change of circumstances, the, you would accept that what should take place then is, the young person should be given another opportunity to speak to a solicitor, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that has got some fairness to it.
It should happen though, shouldn't it?
Oh, yes, it most definitely should happen to it. And that's, and when I say that's the, the status of this, that we need more prescription around, more clarity, to step absolutely everyone through so everyone knows their rights, both the young person, the vulnerable person, clearly, and there is nothing wrong, I think. And sometimes this, you know, your questioning is not allowing that sometimes people do change their minds. And this is accepting that there has to be another step in this protocol, that if there is going to be a change of mind, I am one hundred percent behind that further legal advice is provided.
You are aware, aren't you, that Legal Aid New South Wales and the Aboriginal Legal Service frequently write letters or send emails to investigating police and/or custody managers about the legal advice that they've given to the children, and whether it's been accepted?
Yes.
And you're aware that both organisations specifically refer to being available to provide additional legal advice if circumstances change, is that correct?
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Is one way of providing clarity to the particular part of the memorandum of understanding which I've taken you to, is instead of using the word should, as in the investigating officer should record interview decline, and the custody manager should also record, is replacing the should with must, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think, I believe, me, but I also think the organisation would accept that at first blush, if the, if the advice comes back, going to exercise right to silence, then it must be recorded, I do agree with that. And thereafter, if it's changed, and then there's further legal advice and that changes, clearly that outcome must be recorded, and, and with enormous prescription, even the I says, the he says, and so forth.
I'm going to take you shortly to the fact that these, what's contained in the memorandum and the police circular is not contained in the standard operating procedures. Can you see a benefit in these very agreements that I've taken you to, memorandum of this understanding in the circular, the contents being placed into the standard operating procedures?
I absolutely agree with what you said, and on reading this document, the Charge Room Custody Management Standard Operating Procedures, most recently in preparation for this hearing, it did occur me, occur to me and strike me that there was enormous invisible ink, if not silence, on some of these really entrenched rights that I think should be in there in a lot more prescription than what they are at the moment, which is, I don't think sufficient enough.
In terms of the review of these documents and the standard operating procedures, is it your evidence then that you do support the changing of the word should to must, is that correct?
I sit here, I sit here personally and say, it should be must. Like, like anything in this, when we take away our homework from this hearing, we will scrutinise all of the recommendations and clearly the evidence of people like me, and discuss what those words should look like. But I have no issue myself with the word must.
You'll also take away that the standard operating procedures are silent in respect of both of those aspects that I've just taken you to, is that correct?
Yes, I think they're, I think they're insufficient and they need some work.
Can that be done now, given that the memorandum of understanding and the circular are in force now, that, that is the position of the Commissioner of Police? Can the standard operating procedures be amended now so that they are included in those procedures?
I think at the completion of this hearing, it can be taken away as one of the priority areas for us to look at, and no doubt amend and put more prescription there. What exact words go in there, I'm not going to commit to that, but let me be clear and say that I support every assertion that you've put to me.
Wouldn't the starting point for what the words would be, be the words that are in operation as we speak now, wouldn't that be the starting point?
Yeah, no, that's what I said, that's exactly what I said, I'm one hundred percent supporting what you're saying. But let's define now, and let's take it back as a body of work at the completion of this hearing, and we'll work on that as a priority. That's, that's the best now I can give you.
What, what counsel assisting is raising with you, Assistant Commissioner, I think the risk of intervening is that the evidence indicates there is a problem right now, I think you've used the word slippage. Both the ALS and Legal Aid have said that the majority of police, when asked, when told, the client doesn't wish to be interviewed, comply with that and it gets recorded, but there is what appears to be a significant minority where that doesn't happen, and where there are practices of various types which have occurred, and which have led to repeated rejections by courts using various powers under the Evidence Act. So, is there not need for some clarity right now, rather than waiting until a process is undertaken, perhaps a process which may take months, to guide those police officers who are engaging in slippage in this area? With ongoing work to be done by courts as a result, is there not some logic in a statement, police force wide, that the 2004 and 2005 indications, one of them made by then Commissioner Maroni in 2004, is the position and ought be complied with unless and until there is some amendment to that? In other words, that's the status quo? Isn't that the appropriate way forward at this stage?
As I said at the completion of these hearings, but if, and I don't know when this is due, due to close these hearings, by the way, but with the recommendations, I, I wasn't thinking months, Chief Commissioner, I was thinking much more quicker than that.
And, and I'm conscious, you're here as a, as an Assistant Commissioner of Police, but as a spokesperson for the police force in that sense, and, and, but often one can have a situation where there may be occasional problems identified, where there may need to be a working through...
Yeah.
An assessment of the pros and cons, but here there seems to be a very solid pro, and the cons are really slippage, the outliers. Isn't this a clear situation that calls for some decisive statement now? Reinforcing what Commissioner Maroni said in two thousand and four as being the status quo reinforced by the two thousand and five circular pending for any further developments? It could be said this is an unusual situation where, in the absence of that, these events will keep recurring from day to day, with Legal Aid and the ALS having to grapple with it.
I, I agree with you, Chief Commissioner.
So I'll hand back to Mr Fernandez, thank you, Assistant Commissioner.
I'll ask for...
Sorry, excuse me, if we don't seem to have the ongoing wording coming through...
Of the transcript, it's, it's still, yes, if we could go back to the live stream transcript, thanks.
Going to ask for the police circular, this document, MTS ninety-one, barcoded eight, six, two, zero, two, six, one, to be placed up on the screen. Look, zoom in, please, on the right-hand side. This is the part I took you to previously, Assistant Commissioner. What it tells police very clearly is that they do not have the power to put a suspect in front of a camera to record a refusal of interviews. You are aware, aren't you, that that practice exists even up until now? Police are putting suspects, including children, in front of cameras to record refusals?
Yes, the last week has given me some clarity around that, that's for sure.
Are you able to explain how that could be, given the very clear direction from New South Wales Police about that practice not being permitted?
No, I can't answer generically or specifically. All I can say is that clearly there's been some custom and practice which has moved away from this clear direction, and it's been, through custom and practice, it's, it's got a bit of momentum.
At your level, at Assistant Commissioner level, and in terms of commanders and superintendents reporting up to you, is this being discussed, this practice or custom and practice as you've described it, police going ahead with recording refusals on tape?
No, it has not been discussed with me, but again, I'd take you to some of the opening points in one of your opening questions around, many people do the right thing, and there's some people clearly through custom and practice that are taking some liberties with some very clear directions.
Going to, thank you, that can be taken off the screen, please. Having read the Legal Aid New South Wales submission, you're aware that what's been addressed specifically is a situation where police say to young people that, quote, in fairness, end quote, they are going to put the allegations to the young person in a recorded interview. You're aware of that?
Yes, I am.
You're, you're aware of that practice actually taking place?
Well, I'm aware of it from reading the Legal Aid submission, I'm not aware of it specifically in my day-to-day operations.
Going to ask you to explain, if you can, what stands behind that? Going to ask you to explain, if you can, what stands behind that notion of fairness to the child in putting allegations on tape? Going to ask you the position of the New South Wales Police Force. What is the element of fairness involved in putting a child in front of a camera to put allegations to them?
It's hard to identify that it aligns with the word fair, given the previous clarity of the direction. So I would suggest that it perhaps has an element of unfairness to it. Again, without specifics, and, and even if you did give me specifics, I can't get behind the minds of the investigator or the minds of anyone that, that did such an interview. All I can say is that there needs to be clearly some more education and there clearly needs to be more prescription. And when I say more prescription, that is pretty prescribed, but perhaps even broken down with greater clarity, point by point, about what can be done and can't be done. And that needs to be published throughout the organisation, both in a publication sense and also in an education sense.
You're aware that what frequently happens is, once a child is in front of a camera in an interview room surrounded by at least two police, that the interview then proceeds and the child is actually asked questions. You're aware of that, that situation. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm again, I, I, I wear from it, from, from the submission and I don't have any contest with the Legal Aid submission on those points. That the reason why they are declared vulnerable people and there are extra protections, legal protections as well as welfare protections, is for this very, the very core and essence of what we're talking about, is to protect their rights.
I take you to a, a New South Wales Police Force document. This is Exhibit MTS 79. The barcode for this document is 8544525. I wonder if we go about two thirds of the way or three quarters of the way down the page to the paragraph starting once a suspect? I wonder if that paragraph could be zoomed in on? This is a chapter from the New South Wales Police Force Intranet on questioning of suspects. The part I wanted to take you to, Assistant Commissioner, of the two paragraphs as follows. Firstly, once a suspect makes it clear that they will not answer any more questions, as a matter of fairness to them, put the details of the allegations. E.g., quote, "in fairness to you, I'm going to put the allegations to you." Do you understand that? End, question mark, end quote. The next paragraph for completeness goes on to refer to if the suspect comments and gives answers whether, and questions can continue to be asked. You can see that there in front of you.
Yes.
The question I'm going to ask you is about this. I put a situation here that's taking place where children are being told, in fairness to them, they're going to have allegations put to them. What you can see in a slightly different situation, not relating to children, but relating to suspects, is this view in a document by New South Wales Police that even if the suspect makes it clear they won't answer any more questions, as a matter of fairness, the allegations should still be put to them. Can you see that?
I can see the words in front of me. Yeah, I can, I can see what you're saying, yes.
Do you know why that particular part that I've taken you to forms a part of this policy or direction or guidance on questioning of suspects?
Well, this, this is the first time I've seen this document. And I, nor have I had any input in its formation or draft. But clearly if you say it's a, on our, on our website, then I, I accept that. That again, is a, like, probably a few things that will fall out of this hearing are things that need to be taken away and absolutely scrutinised and worked on to deliver what fairness really looks like.
That's something that you will do. Is, is that correct?
No, well, hang on.
Sorry, I'd be specific of my question, which I should have been. You will take that away and you will consider that together with other people.
When you say me, I'm not sure if I will be in charge of any, any, anything that falls out of this hearing as far as internal policy change or that, may or may not have me over the top of it. There are many things here that will fall within the realm of educational training, our prosecuting area, our legal world, and clearly custody and correction world. So, but I daresay that a group of people will come together with influence in the organisation and learnedness to look at this in a very, all the things that fall out of this, not just specifically these two points here, all of the things to make sure that we, if there is any slippage or anything else, that it is certainly tightened up.
Going to ask for a, a page from your statement to be placed up on the screen. The, this is MTS 94, the barcode is 8620383. Going to ask for paragraph 36 to be zoomed in on, please. In this part of your statement, Assistant Commissioner, you referred to preliminary observations about the Legal Aid submissions. What you state at paragraph 36 is Legal Aid correctly identify that a child or young person is within their rights to reject legal advice and to participate in an interview. However, it is, if you go to the next page, please, clear that greater guidance and direction for both investigating police and custody managers is necessary to ensure that young persons completely understand and are able to give effect to their rights. Are you referring there at paragraph 36 to young people being given the opportunity for a further consultation with a solicitor for legal advice if they change their minds on whether to give an interview or not?
Yes.
Will that be something that can be considered to be placed into the standard operating procedures?
Certainly. I think it has a lot of merit.
The, thank you, that can go off the screen. The this investigation has heard evidence of ways in which children can be interviewed, not in front of a camera, but by way of use of a body-worn video camera. Is that something that you're aware of, that there are police who are using body-worn video camera to interview children and to get admissions from them when the children don't agree to be interviewed on tape?
I think there's, I think there's a continuum or a line there of, of the interview. I think, I mean, I've sat in the back of the courtroom today and heard some of the questions and evidence. And there, this does seem to be clearly a tension point between we're almost criticised when we turn on the video and then other times we're criticised when we don't turn on the video. I'll just put that there as a, a general observation. And I think any police officer would, would give that sort of tension point. In our interactions upfront with any, with any person and without going through some of the doctrine this morning, the body-worn video should be put on any time we engage and converse, whether it be with a, and particularly even with a vulnerable person. That's not to say that the evidence will be admissible, clearly. But if we arrest someone out in the field, out in a public place, we go to their house, we execute a search warrant, it is most appropriate, per the doctrine that we've looked at this morning, that the body-worn video of the attending police is put on and that everything and anything that is done is recorded. Whether where's an issue or whether that's admissible or not because of legal advice, vulnerable, sort of a support person being there or anything else, that, that's another matter. But that's not the only, but legal admissibility is not the only reason, of course, for body-worn video, as we've discussed this morning. So it's only fair and appropriate that body-worn video is taken on. And during that course of that search warrant or arrest or the foot pursuit, whatever it is, there might be words said and there might be actions done. And I think that needs to be recorded. We then project forward to the apprehension and to the police station, meeting with the custody manager, understanding, you know, their, their rights, the opportunity to get legal advice and then exercising potentially their right to silence. And I know I don't want to be interviewed on an ERIS machine, for example. That is all very clear. Everything up to now, I think, is absolutely kosher. If then there's going to be some movement towards the officer approaching the person in an interview room or alternatively in a cell complex and switching on and doing, in, in other words, trying to usurp the ERIS and, and the right to silence, I agree with you and I think the organisation would equally take the position that that is not fair.
Let me take you to specific evidence before this investigation. Can I ask for MTS 86 to be placed up on the screen, please? The barcode is 8620251. And if that could be zoomed in on, please, to the text. Assistant Commissioner, you saw this exhibit played, placed on the screen earlier because I asked Assistant Commissioner Crandell about it. What you can see here seems to be the very thing you've just described, the usurping of the use of the recorded interview with the use of body-worn footage. Just looking at this particular case, you accept, don't you, that what took place here is not an appropriate use of the body-worn video camera?
Can I just, I just need to make a couple of points before I answer that. I'm very happy to answer it. On reading that there, is this from this particular matter, Nantis?
No, this is a particular case.
Oh, it's a particular case.
Which has been provided by Mr Frankham from Legal Aid, New South Wales.
In fairness there, when I read that, I don't know what comes first. That body-worn video is equitably, I can interpret that both ways. In other words, body-worn video happened for legal advice or legal advice about not going on ERIS and then there was a body-worn. Now, unless you can give me the specifics, I can't answer that totally. But I will stick with my previous statement. As I said, that once ERIS is declined, right to silence is, is accepted and communicated as the instructions of the suspect or the young person in this case. And then if there was something else like body-worn video used as a quasi-interview process, then I would deem that to be unfair on, in a generic fact situation. I can't really comment more about this because I don't know what came first.
Can you see the benefit in specific direction, guidance or instruction being placed in the standard operating procedures to address this very issue? I'm going to take you to another exhibit that you saw me take Assistant Commissioner Crandell to. Can I ask for Exhibit MTS 81 to be put up on the screen, please? Oh, I'm sorry, it's not 81. Excuse me. Oh, thank you. Assistant Commissioner Cotter, I'm going to take you to another part of your statement now. And this is, could I ask you to turn to paragraph 38, please? I wonder if this could be put up on the screen from MTS 94? This is the barcoded page 8620384. Take you to what you've stated there at paragraph 38. In summary, you encourage legal practitioners to contact a police area commander or a police district commander to raise those, those issues. Can you see that?
Yep.
Going to do is, I'm going to take you to evidence before this investigation. May I ask for MTS 68, please, to be put up on the screen? The barcode page number is 8. Could we go to the bottom of the page, please? Just going to ask you to read that email, which initiates the emails, and then I'll take you to the next one. This is an email sent to a superintendent of a police district by a solicitor from the Aboriginal Legal Service.
I've read that.
Can I now go to the top of the page, please? This is the response from the superintendent. Could I ask you to read that, please?
Thank you. I've read, read that.
This is an example, Assistant Commissioner, of what you described at paragraph 38, where a solicitor on behalf of the Aboriginal Legal Service raised a specific issue with the superintendent and you can see the superintendent's response there. Is that correct?
Yes.
There's, there's one particular part of the response I will come to later. But could I ask you to note that the superintendent refers in that very first paragraph to this, ultimately the court determines fairness of admissions at that time in a relevant forum, end quote. The next paragraph, there's a reference to police district reviews, that the police district reviews court outcomes and makes reports on individual officers. Can you see that?
Yes.
What you've set out in your statement at paragraph 38, which I took you to, was in fact, this exact situation where the police area commander was approached and has given an answer indicating essentially the court is going to determine fairness. Do you accept that?
On the, on the words I hear on the page, I accept what you've said.
Going back to what you said at paragraph 38, would you accept that issues such as this or issues that lawyers experience are really matters that need to be taken up with the upper levels of management with New South Wales Police?
Yes.
Can I clarify? Sorry, just to see what is the upper levels of management and circumstances that we know? circumstances that we know that the, that email was from a superintendent being a district commander, so that is the most senior person within that command?
Can you see?
Yes, if you'd like to clarify.
Can you see the benefit of issues that are encountered by lawyers such as this one being able to be taken up with yourself as the assistant or the relevant assistant commissioner?
I think that letter from the ALS and the respective solicitor was, was very fair and reasonable, and asking for an open opportunity without referring to a specific case, if I've, if I've got it right, it's the first time again I've seen the document. But again, talking about whatever their arc of fire was for their patch, um, of legal representation, that there was what they deemed to be, what they deemed to be, I'll reiterate that, a systemic issue. And so I think it was a very fair and open letter to the superintendent. The superintendent's response, I think, only half answered the question. So when it comes to the substance and the admissibility of the evidence, technically he's to, correct. However, what the superintendent, he or she, has perhaps failed to address in their submission back was, well, what was done? What was it done with, in accordance with policy and, and protocols and is there, so is there a breach of policy, whether it be bona fide, slippage, legitimate custom and practice? Is it something that we can nip in the bud through education and training, both on a local level or on a more conglomerate level? So I think the, the best approach there, without pulling apart what was exactly in the mind, or the history, or the tensions perhaps, between those two parties, I don't know anything about them, would have been to open up his or her doors to the equivalent from ALS, and to at least at the very first blush, sit down and discuss and get out on the table what it is, because it's not clear to me what the issue was. And then from there, work through what an appropriate action would be for educating or correcting some of the issues raised by ALS in this case. And then the, the best case, the platinum example of a superintendent here, would be to think very corporately and say, well, if it's perhaps happening in my patch, then it might be happening in a neighbour patch or across the organisation, and to push it up through the chain of command to someone like an assistant commissioner to then on forward. I think the appropriate level of management that you are asking me to answer is at that superintendent level, which then provides buffers above that to then further adjudicate. Perhaps in this process, you know, we, we can't educate every superintendent how to open their doors, but let's just hope by the time they do get there, they are, they are pretty open in communicating with their community, whether it be any part of their community, inclusive of the legal community. So there's a lot more there that could have been done, perhaps even more said in the specifics by the ALS lawyer in writing. But that's, I'm not going to criticise anyone else to say that I think it's at the right level, but more could have been done.
I'm going to take you back to your statement now. I could go to MTS ninety-four, please. To page eight six two zero three eight four. And I'm going to take you, Assistant Commissioner, to paragraphs thirty-nine through to forty-one. I wonder if we could just zoom in on those paragraphs, please? I'll ask you about what, what you mean by what you've set out in paragraphs thirty-nine to forty-one. The content of these paragraphs is about inquiries by lawyers with the custody manager about the attitude of police to bail. Can you see that?
Yeah.
What you refer to at paragraph forty in particular is, uh, a presupposition about whether a decision about bail has been made. I want to ask you about the second part of paragraph forty and the last sentence. What you say there is, it may in fact cause a young person to miss an opportunity for diversion and entering the criminal justice system. Can you explain how a lawyer asking a custody manager about what the police attitude to bail is might cause a young person to miss an opportunity for diversion?
Well, first of all, I don't understand the question from the legal fraternity asking about bail. So let me, that's my first point. Um, as I said there in the statement, it presupposes that there is going to be an outcome of legal action, um, let alone bail. So I, I can't get into the minds of the legal fraternity, just why they ask about bail. So all I can say is just raise it, and I can't add any more to that. The second, paragraph forty, and particularly the last sentence you're talking to, um, goes more generally to the whole, whole, I suppose, admission, which is one of the pillars of the Young Offenders Act, and triggers essentially diversion to occur, whether that be through, you know, the, the warning, the caution, or ultimately the youth conferencing, where clearly there's, you know, reflective pieces and, and so forth. So another form of justice is to live in that, in that softer, and, and, and at times a very, very appropriate way. But of course, to get to that diversion, the whole intent of the Young Offenders Act and the whole intent of the policy, not just in this state, but if not the world, requires that there is a gateway that goes through first, and that is, admissions are made to the offence. So that's what I mean, uh, that perhaps, I'm not here to tell the legal fraternity how to frame their questions through the police or to frame their advice, except to say that without an admission, and there is a real tension point for police and the world and the legal fraternity, without the admission or the confession or the admission of guilt clearly, there are opportunities that are not being delivered for diversion. And the only other alternative, if legal action is taken, then is to progress by charge.
My question was about the link you've drawn between the question asked by a lawyer about what the attitude is to bail and a young person missing an opportunity. So I'm not asking about admissions, I'm referring to what you set out in paragraphs thirty-nine and forty. Is there a link between a lawyer asking the question, what is the police attitude to bail, and a young person possibly missing out on an opportunity for diversion?
I don't know the answer to that. I can't answer that question. And I'll re, and I'll rely on my previous answer, which was perhaps long-winded, that the correlation between clearly, um, adm- admitting the offence, what I'm really trying to say there is that the correlation between not admitting the offence might clearly shut, put the shutter door down on diversion under the Young Offenders Act. That's what I'm saying.
When you say at paragraph number forty-one, that I flag this is an area that New South Wales Police will communicate to Legal Aid, what does that mean?
Sorry, paragraph forty-one?
Forty-one. Second last line and the last line, I flag that this is an area that New South Wales Police Force will communicate to Legal Aid?
I think anecdotally, again, in my preparation for this, and clearly being around, not in, but around the youth portfolio, and the, I think, the anecdote or the age-old tensions around exactly what I've just been speaking to in the last couple of answers, is without the, without the admission, then there are many opportunities that are missed in the diversion process under the remit of the Young Offenders Act. And I think that's, that's a fair statement. I think that has been reiterated once, twice, perhaps a hundred times, between all sides, whether it be police, Aboriginal Legal Service, and Legal Aid. I don't think, I, I think I could probably safely say that's a fair anecdote.
The evidence before this investigation is that both Legal Aid New South Wales and the Aboriginal Legal Service, as part of their standard questions, ask police about Young Offender Act diversions, cautions and warnings. Can you accept that?
Yes.
So accepting that that's at the forefront of mind of both Legal Aid and ALS solicitors, is there any problem with those solicitors then asking police what their attitude to bail is?
I don't, I don't understand the question, because that's a decision made by the custody manager on understanding the, the facts and being briefed, and reading the, the charges and so forth, and then understanding all the antecedents and reading the fact sheets and everything. That question there, I think, is way too early, if I just give my personal opinion on that, in this process. That's the only evidence I can give them.
I wonder if that might be a civil time, Chief Commissioner?
Before we do adjourn, in evidence, there is the, uh, Legal Aid Youth Hotline document, which is an electronic field of topics raised. It's an X B to the Legal Aid submission. It's also a freestanding exhibit, MTS ninety, and there is an ALS equivalent. And what they show is a rather systematic process of going through topics with the police officer, and, and then the young person, and covering in some detail the possibility of application of the Young Offenders Act. And as I understand, the evidence given by the solicitors from Legal Aid and the ALS who have given evidence, this is a significant area. So it's not left untouched, it's in fact dealt with on the evidence. Have you taken that aspect into account in expressing what you've said at paragraphs thirty-nine and forty? And, and by that, I mean expressly the risk of a lost opportunity to use the Young Offenders Act.
Yeah, I, I, I have. Yeah, I understand, I understand that it is clearly, it's front and centre on a, in a lot of areas, I think, anecdotally. Um, again, I, I don't, I'm not out in the charge rooms, I'm not out in the field. So it's been twenty years since I did this type of work.
Yes.
Uh, in fairness, um, but anecdote, and it's been expressed, I think, in this hearing, no doubt, that, um, there is perhaps some, a very clear, don't talk to the police, and that, and that's fine. But of course, with that comes some corollary of, of opportunities, of opportunities missed. I think that would be fair to say.
All right, uh, we'll, we'll stop, just a coffee.
Sorry, Chief Commissioner, there's something I should have put on the record earlier this morning. As a result of some matters that were raised with me on behalf of the, the Commissioner of Police during the private examinations, which, just to be clear, won't cause any problems for the non-publication orders, uh, I'm pleased to report the Commissioner of Police has caused for contact to be made with the Legal Aid Commission, and also the Director of Public Prosecution to both work through the memorandum of understanding and have a meeting for the Legal Aid Commission, but also to work with the Director of Public Prosecution's office to consider whether or not a memorandum of understanding should, could be put in place in circumstances where matters prosecuted by the director and there are issues that are identified by judicial offices or evidence excluded is somehow reported through to the Commissioner. So those, um, those first contact and preliminary meetings have already commenced since the last public examinations.
Yes. Well, I can understand the Director of Public Prosecution's, um, desiring some action on that front, as I've indicated already in the, in the early part of this year, the Director of Public Prosecution raised a number of those matters, which came from both metropolitan and country areas in New South Wales. It's not confined to one area as a matter of concern. So when the senior prosecutor in the state raises these matters, uh, against the background that the commission was already seized of this issue in Operation Mantis, and was hearing from other quarters as well of what was said to be a problem. You, you heard what I raised a little earlier with Assistant Commissioner Cotter, I understand he is the, the person who has to answer the questions here and now, and it's not an easy task.
Yes.
An issue which certainly is apparent is that from the Legal Aid and ALS solicitors, these events are occurring all from, from day to day, I'm not saying daily, but we, we, we have had reports, for example, in the private examination, that there'd been yet another event of this type the night before. So there is a question as to whether there would be something done promptly, and, and I've, I've raised with Assistant Commissioner Cotter, and I raised with you the question of whether Assistant, uh, Commissioner Maroney, then the Commissioner of Police, nineteen years ago, signed up to a position which has not been revoked or abandoned since. In two thousand and five, there's a circular that put a further gloss on that area. The fact that that protocol was between the Commissioner of Police and Legal Aid at that time is not to reduce or limit its operation, it really reflects on one view, but the status quo, uh, which has been departed from since. The question then is whether there would be a formal indication that that remains the status quo, subject to further developments. Assistant Commissioner Cotter's raised some, you've mentioned further, a discussion with the DPP and Legal Aid, and, and I would think the ALS too, but this is not a process kicking off de novo. This is against the background of nineteen years where the majority of police, and what sounds like a solid majority of police, are complying with what Commissioner Maroney indicated should be the position all those years ago. But there's been a departure from it in ways that have led to courts having to decide and making findings from time to time of impropriety involving police officers, which raises the further question of whether if the same officer did the same thing more than once, whether that may end up with disciplinary consequences or repeated impropriety. I, I'm, um, perhaps making that general observation in, in response to what you've said, that there does seem to be a need for, um, a clear position being formed now, making all due allowance for there being some perhaps more detailed attention given to these matters. Now, at the risk of saying everything more than once, so I, I'll stop there, seeing it's lunchtime.
Thank you.
If you could step down for the moment. Thank you, Assistant Commissioner, and your evidence will continue at two.
Thank you, Chief Commissioner.
One more chair.